Good morning, Winter Park. We are delighted to see you all here this morning. My name is Betsy Gardner-Eckbert and I'm the President and CEO here at the Winter Park Chamber of Commerce where it's our mission to convene people and ideas for the benefit of our businesses and our community. First, before we get started, I want to recognize any elected officials that we have in the room. Obviously Commissioner Weaver, welcome. Commissioner DeSantis, we thank you all for your service. And then we'd like to recognize any past or current members of the Winter Park Chamber of Commerce Board. Would you rise so we can recognize you and thank you for your service? And we want to make a special welcome of our online audience. You know, unfortunately, we're still trying to practice some safe practices and so our online audience is cherished and welcomed and we are delighted that you're with us. And we do want to thank all of you for coming to our City Commission Candidates Forum today. We want to welcome for Seat 3, Christopher Cruzada and Angelie Vaya who are running for Seat 3. And then we'd like to welcome Elijah Noel and Todd Weaver who are running for Seat 4. We look forward to hearing from our candidates in a few moments. We do ask you all, and I know we're in the second year of doing this, so please keep your masks on while you're at your seats. I'll be putting mine on when I get right back to my seat. We want to thank you for your cooperation. It's our passion to convene people safely and we've been doing that for two years now. We want to continue to do that in a way that respects our community's health. So thank you so much for helping us with that. And we do not get to do free and open to the public content delivery without the significant generosity of our sponsor and that's Advent Health. So I would like to thank Advent Health for sponsoring this morning and our entire Good Morning Winter Park series. Our video sponsor today with a message from Advent Health is Dr. Mahmoud Atulwell, MD. He's a cardiologist and electrophysiologist. If you'll join me for a moment looking at the screen, we have a message from Advent.
Good morning. Thank you for on a few minutes of your time this morning. My name is Dr. Atulwell and I'm a heart rhythm specialist, also known as a cardiac electrophysiologist. I completed my medical school training at the University of Miami Medical School of Medicine, after which I completed my training in internal medicine at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. And finally, I completed my cardiovascular and electrophysiology training at Henry Ford Health System Detroit, Michigan. I treat all different sorts of abnormal heart rhythms with medications, procedures, and lifestyle changes. And as many of you are aware, this month is National Heart Awareness Month. And since we're also sort of starting the new year, I'd like to give a few tips regarding how to maintain a heart healthy and heart conscious lifestyle. And honestly, it all starts with prevention. As Benjamin Franklin said many hundreds of years ago, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." And that is as true today as it was back then. And that's despite the amazing and many technological advances in medicine we've made over the years. Prevention is always going to be best. And honestly, prevention usually focuses on three main areas. That's diet, exercise, and stress management or a healthy mindset. And when it comes to diet, really there have been many diets that have been shown to be beneficial, but the one that consistently has been shown to improve outcomes with regards to cardiovascular health has been the Mediterranean diet. One that focuses on the use of olive oil, vegetables, fruits, grains, and fruits, vegetables, fish, and beans. So I typically recommend my patients use a lot of those in their diet. And also, with regards to exercise, we typically recommend at least 30 minutes of exercise daily, or at least most days of the week. And that can be something as simple as walking. And I typically tell my patients that to treat exercise kind of like the way they plan out their meals, try planning at least, or to card out at least 30 minutes of exercise most days of the week, so that this can help improve their heart health. And finally, when it comes to stress management, I think this is really important for heart health. And this includes things also like diet and exercise, but also things like getting enough sleep at night, making time for friends and family, and things that help improve or keep them a healthy mindset, which has been shown to also improve cardiovascular outcomes. So to take control of your heart health today, please visit hearthealthassessment.com.
Thank you, Dr. Atulwell, and thank you to Advent Health. I wouldn't be the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce without reminding you that I think we have three Mediterranean restaurants on Park Avenue. We also want to thank Jen Adams, who's in our front row. She's our photographer here today. And the photos of today will be up on our Facebook page following this event. And she's very generous with sharing those. So we want to thank Jen Adams for being here today. You know, I am deeply grateful for the League of Women Voters being here with us today to help maintain a perfect piece of democracy that we hope to achieve here. And we are really privileged to have Carol Fogel-Song herself, a veteran community leader and someone that is very well respected in our community as the co-chair of the League's Government Committee. She will be our moderator today. And she's working alongside her team, all of whom are up here in the front of timekeepers and those handling audience questions should we have time permitting. I invite Carol to come up now, walk us through the process for today's forum, and to lead the forum to be followed by, if time permits, audience questions. Would you please join me in welcoming Carol Fogel-Song?
Thanks, Betsy. I'm going to stay on my seat because that way I can get to the question voters and the timekeepers and you all can see me. And I apologize for having my back to the rest of you, but I'm not that much to look at. I'm being assisted today by our timekeeper, Jan Little, and Lee Rambo Kemp. And our question voters, Caroline Emin Schramm and Barbara Lanning, who is the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Orange County. I'm going to ask everybody in the audience to please turn off your cell phones.
Yeah, Ronnie.
Here's the deal. If it rings and I hear it, you make a $5 contribution to the Chamber of Commerce.
Turn the pedals on then.
Maybe I need to make it a bigger penalty. This is a candidate forum for two of Winter Park's City Commission seats. And we have all four candidates with us today. We will be following the League of Women Voters Voter Forum format. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. They will have one and a half minutes to respond to my first three questions and a minute for each of the following questions. The candidates drew cards in a little bit of high stakes drama at the beginning. And we have already determined who gets to go first on the opening statement and who will go last on the closing statement. Did I write this on the desk? I'm going to ask you all to please hold your applause to the end because we're on a fairly tight timeframe and we'd like to get in as many questions as possible for the candidates. At the end, we will give them all a rousing round of applause. We will be showing the candidates cards. They got a little bit of experience with this about a week ago. There's one minute left, 30 seconds left, and stop! I will let you finish a sentence, you may not finish a paragraph. So we will now begin with our candidates' opening statements. And based on the drawing of the cards, Angelie Vaya goes first on the opening statement.
Thank you to the Winter Park Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum today. I would also like to thank the audience for joining us in this conversation and being a Winter Park voter. My name is Angelie Vaya and I'm a technology entrepreneur, a proud mom of a 15-year-old son, and a 14-year resident of Winter Park. I was born in Zambia, Central Africa, and came to the United States in 1990 to further my education and pursue a degree in business. I received my bachelor's in respiratory therapy and a master's in healthcare systems administration from the University of Michigan. Go Blue. I started my business career by launching the very first e-commerce furniture retail websites in the country. From there, I had a successful business career with corporate, major corporate companies on planning their future with e-commerce platforms. Everything changed for me, though, when my son was born in 2006. I knew at once I had to slow down. I had to find a place to raise him. That's when, in 2007, I visited Winter Park. And at once, I knew I had found my perfect home. Today, I own two small businesses in the technology sector and serve as the Vice President of the Indian American Chamber of Commerce. It's a $1 billion business representation in the state of Florida. I also serve as a CRA to work and create positive change to our residents and businesses. 14 years ago, I fell in love with Winter Park, its natural beauty, its charm, and its incredible quality of life. I am running for the City Commission, Seat 3, to protect these qualities while also creating a healthy, happy, dynamic city for future generations to call home.
Thank you. Our second opening statement will be delivered by Chris Cruzada.
Thank you very much, Carol. Thank you for everyone for being here. Good morning. My name is Chris Cruzada. I'm running for Winter Park City Commission, Seat 3. I believe this city is a great city and I'm running because I believe I have the professional background and experience to serve all the residents of Winter Park and make a positive difference. Professionally, I've been an accountant and I'm currently an attorney. I know about budgets and financial statements and reconciliations. I also know about codes, statutes, and ordinances. And I think these analytical skills are very important to have to be effective on the commission. I've also volunteered with local advisory boards, Orange County Development Advisory Board, Ford Association Housing and redevelopment officials, Catholic Charities, Central Florida Housing Subcommittee. So I've got a lot of experience on these boards in understanding housing and understanding development. Additionally, I've been a part of a family company that has owned and operated and managed land throughout the state of Florida in residential, commercial, and agricultural for about over 30 years. And so as this community grew, the family company grew, and I got to see a lot of different perspectives of how land is used, how it's reused, and how it's returned to possibly a natural state. So I think those types of experiences will lend need to be effective City Commissioner if elected. My personal background here with Winter Park is I was born at the Naval Training Hospital in 1973. My mom and dad came here because my father served in the military for 20 years and one of his last assignments was at the Naval Training Center. We had a house off of Shore Brook Road adjacent to Winter Park High School. A lot of great memories of going to church and... Please vote for me. Thank you.
Our third opening statement will be by Elijah Noel.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to sincerely thank Advent Health as the sponsor of the League of Women Voters for putting this event on, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. It is nice to be back amongst a lot of familiar faces. I see a lot of my leadership Winter Park classmates out there as well. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the support. So I'm Elijah Noel and I'm running for Winter Park City Commission, Seat 4, here in the beautiful city of Winter Park. And I'm a longtime community advocate, community member here in Winter Park. I went to Fortune 100 Public Middle School here at the Geneva School. Went on to high school also at the Geneva School in full scholarship. And I initially attended Rollins, graduating with a international business degree, minor in Spanish, while representing the men's basketball team. Like I mentioned before, that was probably several pounds ago now, so... But my platform is very simple. Physical responsibility is huge for me. Connectivity throughout the city connecting our parks, recreation centers, as well as supporting local businesses. I love the engagement aspect that the Chamber has done, getting a lot of voters out. And separately, I appreciate all the support, donations, contributions from the hundreds of supporters within the Winter Park community and outside. I aim to represent all of Winter Park. That's West Side, that's incorporated Winter Park, that's unincorporated Winter Park. And I'm glad to be here today. I look forward to divulging more of who I am and what I believe. Thank you.
And our final opening statement this morning will be by candidate Todd Weaver.
Thank you. And thanks to the Chamber and the League for sponsoring this event and Advent Health. I'm Todd Weaver and I've been honored to be your commissioner for three, almost three years now. And two years ago, crisis hit all of us and we had to react very quickly with our partners, the Chamber of Commerce, Park Avenue District, our cultural venues, our restaurants and hospitality, financial institutions. All this was a team effort to recover. And today, we enjoy a 2% vacancy rate on Park Avenue. And I want to thank you all that we're involved in that. So almost 150 years ago, Chase and Chapin had this wonderful idea that became home for us. And they put these elements in place that are unique in Winter Park. And we call those historical elements now. Later on, the cultural institutions came in and became part of that family. Our founders knew that we needed parkland, we needed green space, we needed a rail stop, we needed a place to park our horses and buggies. Well, cities evolve. And where you used to park a horse and buggy, you can park your electric car and charge it. So as our city evolves, leadership that we currently have, and myself included, are looking to the 22nd century. And we are in the process of undergrounding our electric power, having a more resilient water system. Our fiber optics network is coming online. We're instituting smart city solutions for traffic control, silent crossings for the railroad and other things. So we're preparing for that next generation and the generation after. And it takes somebody with a scientific background to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask the candidates, all four, to answer the same question. And they will have a minute and a half to do so. So as our first question, name a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, and a threat for Winter Park. And we will start with candidate Cruzada.
Thank you, Carol. Strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is something analytically unfamiliar with being a business and being a lawyer. So the strengths would be our community, our institutions. We're very, very interconnected with one another. It's very common for me to be walking, canvassing, and meet a resident that is a part of many different institutions. So our interconnectedness is good. I could go on with other strengths, but that's first and foremost. Weaknesses. I think the biggest weakness that the city has is trying to pull together and vision a premier urban village. So those last two words, urban village, some people think we need to go up and others think that we should have the same character that we have. I'm more in the latter of the village concept. And then weaknesses. I'm a law guy by background and an accountant as well. When we try to enforce laws, sometimes you may not have the budgets or the finances to do it. And then we want to change law, we don't have the finances or budgets to do it. So I think with what we have, we can work with it. And then lastly, threats. The Orange County Development, as city, as an Orange County Development Advisory Board, the Vision 2015 Plan is counter to what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Stop. Candidate Vaya is next. Same question. Strength, opportunity, weakness, and threat.
Our strength is that we are a dynamic city. Everyone wants to be in Winter Park. It is a beautiful, historical, charming, natural beauty city. That's why I live here and that's why a lot of businesses and development projects want to come here. Our economy, you know, again, this is a place that if a lot of the different companies want to be presenting themselves here. Our weakness to me would be our communication and planning for our future. And that's one of my messages. What do the next five or 10 years look like for Winter Park and for the future generations? And this is a conversation we need to start having now. How can technology play an impact? How can we come together as a community on having better connectivity with our pedestrian, bicycle, fiber optic lines, with businesses, and our residences? These are all things that we need to think about and we can have all this happen and continue to energize our economy. As a small business owner, I have a lot of experience in that, coming from the technology sector. I work with the retail, with medical, and as the Indian American Chamber of Commerce Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Noel, next question. Same question.
Quite simply, I believe our strengths is everyone in this room. That's residents, community members, local business leaders. As far as weaknesses, I think that speaks more to a hushed voice. Leadership in this city unfortunately does not always listen to our residents, does not always listen to the complaints. The U.S. Postal Office is a great example of that. There is a huge advocacy to not have it moved. And regardless, it's being pushed forward to be moved into a residential neighborhood. Huge distribution center at that moved into a residential neighborhood on the West Side. As far as opportunities, the opportunity is really to change the narrative that Winter Park is closed for business, that Winter Park doesn't listen to its residents. The opportunity is all of us here to make our voices heard and to elect leadership that will listen to you in me. And lastly, threats, similar to weaknesses, is stagnation. Living here in Winter Park, I've noticed a gradual change from a lot of forward-thinking city to a lot more stagnant thinking. That's not conducive to business owners. That's not conducive to residents. That's not conducive to building back our community back.
Candidate Weaver.
Thank you, Carol. We have many strengths here, honestly. You all know that. Our founders put this wonderful plan in place and we've been building on it ever since. But one of the strengths I have to point out is our city staff. They're very dedicated and very capable. And policy that comes off the dice from the commission, they're there to institute it. And they've done a wonderful job for decades. We have many opportunities. And one of them is the Orange Avenue overlay. We repealed the first version of it. We put a central park in that district. We addressed parking, infrastructure, those types of things. There are many opportunities economically and residentially around the city that we can build on. So I'm going to talk about a weakness and a threat at the same time. So the number one issue we have right now is water. So we are not prepared to use replenished water. The new golf course that we're going to buy will provide an opportunity for that. We also don't have young people going into public works. And when your toilet doesn't flush and your tap doesn't work, you're in a world of hurt. So help me do that. We need to stimulate youth in those trades to keep all of us alive in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with candidate Vaya and we'll circle around. Small businesses are often the economic engines and barometers of local communities. Assess the strength of our small businesses in Winter Park today. How are they doing and what do they need?
So as I mentioned, I am a small business owner. And during COVID, I went through a lot of the challenges myself. You know, one of the biggest issues we're having in small businesses is retaining staff and having employment. Myself, I've had challenges with it. With also another challenge that businesses are facing in Winter Park are a lot of the workforce is coming from the outside. And so they're not living in Winter Park. It's an affordability issue as well for here. And that's one of the reasons that we know our business offices are, for example, not in Winter Park. We're outside. I would love to encourage more of other sectors to come into Winter Park by addressing some of these issues of affordable housing. Also, another issue that I've seen in Winter Park, small businesses complain as they've been walking around, is the parking. The parking is always an issue. We're a beautiful city and some of these problems we do need to address and we need to come up with some solutions. And as a City Commissioner with a broad experience in small business and coming from a technology sector of being a creative mindset, I hope to add on and complement our city and our staff with the experience I bring. Thank you.
Candidate Noel.
Would you mind repeating this question for the listeners?
Certainly. Certainly. Small businesses are often the economic engines and barometers for local communities. Assess the strength of our small businesses in Winter Park today. How are they doing and what do they need?
Speaking as a small business owner myself, I'm bringing a rural Winter Park, a restaurant here on Park Avenue. I would say, again, I would like to change narrative that Winter Park is closed for business because it's not. There's a lot of red tape. Sometimes getting a project off the ground, getting a business here in Winter Park is not as easy as maybe it should be, but possibly there's an advantage to that as well. What I'd like to challenge, the 2% vacancy rate on Park Avenue, I thought that was interesting. My opponent brought that up, considering amidst COVID-19 pandemic. He was not entirely focused on supporting local businesses, but rather passing back our chicken ordinances. Small businesses are the heart of our city. And what they need right now is support from the Commerce, from us all. We need to shop local, support locally, and be involved. Small business owners have complaints, the parking, traffic is an issue. And I think we just need to be a lot more open to them and get a more consensus of feedback from these owners.
Candidate Weaver.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Businesses all have different needs. But right now, what we're suffering with are supply chain issues and labor shortages. So one of the problems we have for labor shortages, we have no affordable land for workforce housing or affordable housing. And that's a problem. So how do you fix that? You work with mass transit. The penny sales tax that's coming up, more than half owed is paid by non-residents of Orange County. Much of that money is going to benefit links, expanding Sun Rail, getting a link to the airport so our visitors that come to our Park Avenue district have a place to drop off and parking is, parking needs are less. But supply chain issues, I'm sorry, as a commissioner, I can't help with that. But I hope you'll support some housing initiatives that are coming up. Definitely bring those by the public to talk about, but getting them here is a real problem. Thank you.
Okay, candidate Crisada.
Yes, oh, here you go. Sorry, thought I turned it off. The small businesses in Winter Park are very unique and very different. There are different sectors or areas of Winter Park that have different small businesses. Meaning, Winter Park Corners, which we're near, I live, is different from the Central Park Avenue District, which is different from the center of Winter Park to the old Kmart Plaza, or even Winter Park Village. All of them have attraction, the ability to attract customers and consumers. I'm afraid sometimes we get tunnel vision and just to one aspect of what Winter Park is, people want to be here. I think the small business is fairly healthy as we sit right now for the past quarter. Over COVID, I've looked at the budget and seen the sales tax collections for the city decline. So some of them are still reeling from COVID. How do we help them to be more resilient or be more sustainable? Connecting them to infrastructure better. What Commissioner Weaver said was good with connectability with traffic or bus or Sun Rail. Housing, that's another way of trying to support local businesses in having workers so they can be in their stores and open them and close them and do the things that are necessary. For the future, I think connectivity with fiber optics is going to be really huge. We are in this fourth decade of the internet and there will be a lot of Internet of Things coming about.
Next question, we're just going to start with candidate Noel. The first five proposed charter amendments on the March ballot require supermajority votes for specific land use decisions by the city commission. What is your position on the requirement that four out of five members of the city commission must approve each of these land use questions?
Well, I'd simply say that against it, against the charter amendments, that four out of the five commissioners need to approve to get something passed through. Supermajority, the term itself sounds good, supermajority, but in actuality, it's kind of keeping the power in one place and not allowing a lot of feedback from residents. Again, Progress Point, the U.S. Post Office, making the City Hall, Town Hall a historic reserved place is not conducive to getting a consensus from residents. And a supermajority is not a good way to push inclusiveness as well.
Candidate Weaver.
Thank you, Carol. I am heartily going to vote for these five. And these are actually not things that this commission came up with. They used to be in our code. We had supermajority requirements for quite a few of these. And the last, during the last two administrations, they were taken out of the code. So with these amendments, you can vote for them or not vote for them, but we're taking it to the people and saying, look, do you want us to make it easy for somebody to build in wetlands or resummon the post office or resummon lakefront residential property, commercial? All these things are something that should get wide consensus. And the way you do that is you have supermajorities for them. So yes, I support the, all five of the supermajority amendments. And they weren't our ideas. Thank you.
Candidate Crisada.
Yes, I support the charter amendments. Being aware, I understand how supermajority works. It's in our constitution. If you want to change something in the constitution, you have to bring a lot of will, a lot of consensus on it. Not only from the federal level, the state, state governors, state legislators, the people, but even Congress. So in these issues that are on the charter amendments, these are pillars that make our community, make the charm, make it naturally beautiful. Building in wetlands, I just don't see why that would. We shouldn't build in wetlands, period. Again, changing an ordinance in the adoption process midway. Again, I think there needs to be a little bit more of a consensus in the commission to do something like that. I like that this is going before all of the residents. I will support whatever the residents want. But personally, I like these amendments. Thank you.
Candidate Maya.
So I was at the city commission meetings and I have been attending them for the past several months. And I really looked at this issue a lot and I really thought about it and researched it. Because initially, I was hesitant as well when I hear the word supermajority. I do support all six. And the reason I came to that conclusion has a lot to do with the divisiveness of a lot of projects that did come into Winter Park. The projects, you know, needed more discussion. And these are irreversible changes have they gone through. So a supermajority is really protecting the resident. It gives us more dialogue and it will get us the best projects in our city. Historically, Winter Park did have supermajority. And when we did have this, the city employees, some of them did mention that because we had it in place, there was less divisiveness and we were able to move forward with quality projects. Again, this is in the hands of the voters. And I encourage everyone to really read and ask me questions, if you have any, on how I got to this decision. I'm always here to listen.
Thank you. We will now move to the section in which you only have one minute to answer the questions. And we will start with candidate Weaver first on this one. Traffic congestion and parking, the devil's holy trinity. Describe the root causes of this perceived crisis and what solutions the city might have control over as remedies.
Thank you. I blame Chase and Chapman for all of this. So, you know, most of the residents came here by rail and they didn't even own a horse and buggy. And a horse takes up a lot less room. But that's the basis of what we have, that's the footprint that we have to work with. So we're talking about parking garages in certain places. We left room for a parking garage at Progress Point next to the new park there. And I hope you're enjoying the trees being planted. The last two will come this week. What was the question again?
The devil's holy trinity.
Oh, okay. So I mentioned earlier about our new fiber optics network. And one of the things that we're doing with that is having smart traffic controls and making safer pedestrian crossings, things like that. So there was one more, traffic, parking, and?
Congestion.
Congestion. Well, we need some intersection improvements on West Fairbanks. We're geologically challenged, I should say geographically challenged, east and west. So Fairbanks alone is the only street we have, we have to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Crisada.
Okay, it's on, thank you. Sorry. Traffic congestion and parking. So we're the victim of our own success. Everybody loves to come here. And a lot of periphery are coming here. And I mentioned in my opening statement, one of the issues facing Winter Park is the Vision 2050 Plan for Orange County Government. Their comprehensive plan is over 500 pages long and they want to bring 700,000 people to the local area for the next 30 years. And if you look at our comprehensive plan, it's much different. To try to resolve it, I think we should try to use some technology with parking garages, letting people know what parking is available. To build more parking, that is a challenge, it is very expensive. Congestion, again, controlling traffic lights through the city to get people from point A to point B. And then also trying to use a different type of modality, encouraging bike riders, encouraging walking would be a way to try and allay those traffic concerns and congestion. Thank you.
Candidate Maya.
I hear you residents and businesses, traffic is horrible here right now. It takes me a really long time to get to work every morning. We really need to look at this issue the next five years. And we can probably have some traffic studies done before development projects come in front of us. And I look at this as a two-part, like what can the city do? What can we do? Redesign our intersections. As mentioned, the fiber optics will have adaptive lights that will definitely help us alleviate some of that. And also exploring alternate modes of transportation as well could be a direction we can take. Parking garages, real estate is expensive here. However, when we have the opportunity, we should make sure that we take it, take that action right away as a city. Municipalities are surrounding us right now. So a lot of our traffic issues are actually coming from cut-through. And we can't unfortunately control the other cities, but FDOT can help.
Okay, candidate Noel.
Yes, so I don't believe there's a one true solution to traffic problems here, congestion, parking. Otherwise, we would have done it already, I'm sure of that. A way to affect traffic, I believe, is to do traffic studies. And like Andy Lee said, cut-through traffic is a huge part of that. There were traffic studies done, parking studies done as well. The Orange Avenue overlay, unfortunately, the original plans were for scrap. And that was a bit of a missed opportunity. But traffic studies are extremely effective. Trusting the experts is a huge key. I don't think it's our job as leaders of this city, municipalities, others, to make decisions based on our own expertise. We have experts, we have staff, but we need the trust to get these projects pushed and finished. Thank you.
Okay, this time, we will start with candidate Crisada. And this is a one-minute question.
Okay.
There are a lot of questions and perspectives surrounding the future of the existing post office. And it is up to the U.S. government when or whether to sell the property. While the current land use code would prohibit high-density development, some development could be allowed. What is your position on the role the city should play relative to the post office property? Do you support purchasing the property and if so, at what price point?
Great question. I know it's been a lot lately in Winter Park talk, in Winter Park minds, about what is going to happen there. The way it sits right now, it is federal land. And people have a good interaction with the post office. And they are not, they have not represented that they will sell. But it's so attached to that Central Business District Park that I can't think of any other use of it if they were to sell other than park that park that can expand that Central Business District Park. I think of Winter Park's Central Business District Park like I think of Central Park in New York, Forest Park in St. Louis, or Piedmont Park in Atlanta. You cannot separate the park from Winter Park. And to put something there that would take away from that ambiance is something that I wouldn't be for. I would want the post office to try and move, excuse me, the city of Winter Park to move in a direction to create a conversation for the purchase. Thank you.
Candidate Maya.
My view is that the post office should really be, the post office should be where it is. And if we ever do have the opportunity of having the making that purchase, then it should be city-owned green space to expand Central Park. I have heard from the residents and the businesses that everyone is really, really happy and attached to our current location. The postmaster is not ready to sell. So I would really like for it to stay where it is unless the opportunity again arises for us to make that purchase. We will need to be in negotiating power of maybe having the reserves when this opportunity happens. And as serving on the CRA Advisory Board, I would be okay to have at least $7 million on that reserve to make that purchase if that opportunity ever arrives. But I want the city to be in the power of negotiating the best deal for the residents when that does happen. So again, the residents are very happy with the post office. So until that day comes.
Candidate Noel.
I'm vehemently against moving the post office. And I believe this because I don't even know who wants it moved in the first place. I don't think anybody in this room knows who wants it to be moved. I think it's perfectly fine where it's at. The push to have more green space on Park Ave is not essentially necessary. We have over the limit of, or over the required amount of green space in the city of Winter Park. And furthermore, we'd be moving the post office, this huge distribution center. Of course, we pick up and send off mail there, but it's a distribution center. We'd be moving that to the west side where there are residents. And I was just on the west side the other day, I live there. There are residents there, there are children playing. We'd essentially be sending 18-wheelers down these streets where these children play to service the post office there. I can't be more against it.
Candidate Weaver.
Thank you, Carol. I'm happy with the post office remaining right where it is for the next 100 years. And however, the post office is free to sell that property to any entity they want, anytime. And we have to be prepared for that eventuality. So the city commission and the CRA board have set aside $7 million in that eventuality. But the post office has a rule where they have to operate in the downtown. So that limits where we can put it. So at this point, we're looking for prospective sites should that opportunity come up. But yes, I support leaving the post office there. It fits with the scale, the charm, and it doesn't interrupt our wonderful Central Park. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with candidate Maya. How frequently do you use, or how many times have you used, Sun Rail? Do you think the city should do more to promote the use of Sun Rail?
So the problem with Sun Rail, I have not used Sun Rail very much. I've only used it, I believe, three times. But I am excited that we do have Sun Rail as an opportunity, as an opportunity for transportation problems that we have incurred in the city. This is, you know, looking at the connectivity with the airport and hoping that we can get more weekends. more weekend hours on the Sun Rail, as well as better hours of operating hours on it. I do believe that we can have this as a strong solution for a lot of our transportation and parking issues on Park Avenue with its location. I would want us to be able to support and brand and market it more, knowing that we have the availability, hours of operation, available to the residents as well as the people visiting us. So, great question, we need to do more with the Sun Rail.
Candidate Noel.
Yes, in my opinion, the Sun Rail is not only a creative, interesting way to travel between cities, but it's also a necessity for a lot of people. I know my freshman year at Rollins, I was commuting from home over in Delphine, and I actually took the city bus to Delphine to get to the Sun Rail, I took the Sun Rail to get to Central Park here, then I walked to my 6:45 p.m. class, got out of class around 9:00, just in time to come back and catch the Sun Rail to go back home. So the Sun Rail is necessary for a lot of people, it's an asset to our community, and I definitely support it.
Candidate Weaver.
Thanks again, Carol. I love Sun Rail, but the single most important thing that could happen to relieve congestion, labor shortages, needs for parking, is to have a link to Sun Rail to the airport. They're all set up for it. We have to support that as a county and a region, and the sales tax would do that for us. Imagine all the visitors that come here to spend money on Park Avenue arriving by train and not needing a place to park, or any of the other problems that we have associated with that. I love Sun Rail, I want to see it expanded, but the city has no budget to do that without your help.
Candidate Crisada.
So I have not ridden Sun Rail. I'm more of on the east-west type of access of commuting in Winter Park, so for me, it doesn't work. As a institution within the region, we've been through COVID, I don't know the ridership of Sun Rail, I would like to look at that. I would also like to see how other technologies are maybe picking up the slack for when Sun Rail doesn't run, mainly late evenings and weekends, looking at empirical data. I'm not sort of convinced yet that a one cent sales tax would do a lot for our local transportation solutions at this point. I think it's a great start, but I would like to see Sun Rail working on the weekends so that you can get customers and consumers coming down to Park Avenue. That would go a long way before we take the next step, is having availability of the services longer than it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. In respect of our audience's time, and since we promised each of you a two-minute closing, I'm going to give you just a second while I keep talking, so you can think about what it is you want to say in your two-minute closing, and again, based on the drawing of the cards, candidate Noel, you will go first on the two-minute closing.
I truly believe it's time for anybody who has any disgruntled feelings, any grievance here in Winter Park to voice that and be the change that you want to see in your own community. That change starts with a vote, starts with a vote for me, and it starts with your voice being heard, and that's exactly what you'll get with me in office. I can promise you three things. I will be consistent, I will be transparent, and I will always show up and represent all the residents in Winter Park. This change also starts with this responsibility, that's not overspending on projects and properties here in Winter Park such as the post office, trying to spend, I believe, three times the estimated appraised value for the property, just to have it so we can develop in the future. It starts with connectivity, this change, that's connecting our parks, recreation centers, and areas through bike paths and walkways, and it starts with supporting our local businesses, that's changing narrative, that's being involved on the ground level in our communities. I thank you all for your time. I'm tremendously proud to have the support of hundreds of community members here in Winter Park, and I look forward to representing everyone in the city. A vote for me is a vote for us all. Thank you, thank you for my time.
Thank you. And next, candidate Vaya gets to do her closing statement.
I am running for the Winter Park Commission seat three because I love our city. I want to protect and contribute to its 140-year incredible journey. I hope you will remember a few things about what I've said today. Firstly, I am heavily involved in our community, serving on the CRA Advisory Board, working with the commission to create a positive change for the residents and businesses. Secondly, I am a technology entrepreneur, a small business owner. I will bring a fresh perspective and a unique set of skills to this commission. Thirdly, I'm an incredibly hard worker. I have attended more than a dozen commission meetings throughout the last several months. If I am elected, I will ask the question every morning, what can I do for the businesses and the residents of Winter Park? And finally, I want to start a conversation with you on how do we protect our past while planning our future? I believe we can preserve our historic charm while enhancing our quality of life. Bike, pedestrian connectivity, designing better parks and beautiful parks, fiber optics and lines to residents and businesses, these are all things that can be done. We need to start a conversation. It's our city, it's our voice, and please join me on having this conversation by voting on or before March 8th. Please call or email me, I will always be here to listen. Thank you.
Candidate Weaver.
Thank you. I'm gonna go nerd here, so, oh, by the way, I'm a small business owner, and this isn't the product, but I know who asked the right question today, so you're gonna get that bottle of Lake Bell honey from my backyard. This commission, in the last three years, has done a lot, very positive things. We had to react to the pandemic in myriad ways, helping residents and businesses cope with that economic downturn. I think we have a successful plan for the Orange Avenue overlay and Progress Point and the new park there. We've brought on a new director of natural resources to manage our trees, our lakes, and our sustainability program. And our latest investment is Prepare for the 22nd Century with the Fiber Optics Network that will integrate smart city technology for traffic control, quieter road crossings, cybersecurity, and reliable underground high-speed internet services to our residents and businesses. I only ask you to let me serve three more years and continue this project, excuse me, this... Let me continue this process. Thank you.
Candidate Crisada.
Thank you very much, Carol. Thank you, everyone, for being here, thank you for the Winter Park Chamber, League of Women Voters. Winter Park means a lot to me, raising my family here. I'm blessed to be a part of this community. At times, I get caught in my busy life that I don't see, and I catch it every now and then with my kids' eyes. When we drive through Winter Park, their eyes go to the park, their eyes go to the window, the shops, the windows on the shops on the avenue. And I think inside of me, that's a little bit of how I kind of grew up, with the rattling of the tires on the brick road and experiencing that. But it's hard to quantify that, to qualify it to a lot of people without having them experience it, but I think a lot of people do experience it. What I pledge is to protect the environment that we have here, the charm, the quality of life, and our physical assets by following our comp plan, our future land use maps, our zoning classifications, and our codes and ordinances. I also pledge to continue the work of the city for sustainability, for zero-carbon emissions, and protecting our environment. I also pledge to keep our tax rates low, but also maintain an eye for the future by keeping our reserves or increasing our reserves, just in case another COVID happens or some other aspect that hurts our economy or hurts our city that we can recover. And then lastly, to support our arts and culture through community involvement and community promotion. I hope that through this process, you've gotten to see how I think and my analysis side of who I am, and I hope I can earn your support and vote. Please vote March 8th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How about a round of applause for candidate... We recognize that this takes enormous preparation. We recognize that you have families and jobs and other things to do, and we really appreciate your engaging with the Chambers audience, with our community, letting people know what you're all about as we make a decision on March 8th. How about a separate round of applause for our League of Women Voters? I'm the winner of Lake Bell Honey here today, I'm very excited about that. I do suffer from allergies, I'm looking forward to having some local honey. Now, here's where you come in. We have decisions to make, and we need your help in driving voter turnout this year. We did really well last year, but we are pushing to an even greater level of participation this year. But we want to make everything really easy for you. If you've got college kids away at school that need to register to vote or vote by mail ballot, take this card with you and take a picture of the QR code and text it to them. We have everything that you need to register to vote right on our website at winterpark.org. We also have posters you can put up in your office with a QR code that links you to registration, and we have a really big poster, I'm looking at you, Alan Chambers, if you want to put this up in John Craig clothing, to help people connect to voter registration information or vote by mail resources. So we'd love for you to have this in your business, your place of work, and if you take this little card with you today, everything you need to connect to our website that has a full kit of voter registration and vote by mail resources there for you. We'd also love for you to take these little round stickers that my team worked so hard on, to wear around and let people know that we're having elections, it's time to get engaged, it's time to make an informed decision about the future of Winter Park. So I do have a couple of announcements, because we would love for you to come back to more of our programming, we're thrilled that you're here today. If you are a new member or someone who hasn't engaged with what we do and how we offer digital resources, please come to our Unlocking Your Membership Potential program, that's going to be February 9th, right here at the Winter Park Chamber of Commerce, from 10 to 11. We have a connection series, which is a networking opportunity. That's Wednesday, 23rd, February, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Dr. Stephanie Porus's office. More information on all of this is on our website at winterpark.org. We'll be hosting the State of the City at our brand-new event center, and that's going to be on the 25th from 11:00 to 1:30, 11:30 to 1:30, and we'll be hearing the mayor's address and recognizing the employees of the year from the city. Our event Cheers to You, in which we celebrate achievements of community leaders and stewards, will be Thursday, March 3rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., that will also be at the new event center. And as many of you know, it was my privilege yesterday to announce David Odehowsky as our Lydia Gardner Citizen of the Year. And then we'll be back here next month on Friday, March 4th. For more Advent Health sponsor, Good Morning Winter Park, we'll be hearing from Damian Betson about the commercial real estate market and what we all need to be thinking about there. The most important thing I'm going to ask you to remember today is please make a plan to vote. We really appreciate your being with us today, helping us live out our mission. Enjoy your weekends, and thanks again for coming.